I'd like to call this work session to order and ask Angela, roll call please.
Roll call Bryant.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Broneman.
Here.
Haley. Mylan.
Here.
Wavany Henry.
Here.
You have a call.
Our call for a motion for the approval of the agenda for the work session.
This is Jeff, so moved.
Very good, Mylan.
It's been moved and seconded, roll call please.
Roll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Broneman.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Wavany Henry. Hi. That motion carries.
All right, board updates or comments?
I'd just like to, um, just some, a brief comment. I attended the community forum last Wednesday night. There were about thirty to forty people, thirty that were in, actually physically there. There was more that were on Zoom, but I don't know how many were on Zoom. The meeting was conducted by Ty Gorman and by Louise Lynch. Ty Gorman basically did the Zoom part of it and Louise managed the in-person people. They were, basically their mantra is they want safe and affordable utilities and access, utility access for everyone. The demands were no shut offs, no fees, lower bills. They were, they felt that the elected officials, UG, VPU, did not take them seriously. There were two, basically two, two tracks of the meeting. One was Ty Gorman is with the Sierra Club, so his interest ran towards Nierman, shutting down Nierman, getting money from the federal government to build a new, new power sources that are renewable and safe. And then there was Louise and that the people that were there, the community people that were there, they were more interested in the the rates and, you know, having, having shut offs and getting their electricity shut off. Medical devices came up. There seemed that they had a problem with finding the application for medical devices. And then once they would find the medical, the application, or they fill it out and then they never get any response back from the, from the utility as to whether or not the, the application has been approved or not approved. And they would call, they call up and then they get a number and that number gives them to another number and then other numbers send to another number and they can never get any satisfactions. When it was opened up to the audience, the people were mainly concerned about, they want to know why the UG and the VPU were together. They, you know, they don't want the UG and the VPU to be together. They don't want the UG charges on the bill. They want, they want to get a separate bill and from the BPU and a separate bill from the UG. They don't feel that it's fair that they have their utilities turned off because they don't pay their trash, you know, or they don't pay, you know, some of the, the charges that, that the UG has on their bill. The, you know, they want to just be able to pay their water and their lights and, and that. There was one lady that was there and she, her complaint was that her daughter was told she had a $300 credit on her bill. And then she goes home and her power is turned off and then the BPU told her she needed to pay $600 to get her utilities turned back on again. And, you know, that was, you know, I don't know, you know, what, if there's any truth to that or not, but, you know, that was her, her complaint. So that was, that was basically the, we've got several, you know, complaints about that. There are a few people stood up and said that they wanted to file a class action lawsuit, sue the BPU. And others said they wanted to recall the elected officials or have prior, do a recall. But, you know, it was, it was pretty respectful. They didn't attack any, there's only two elected officials that were there at the meeting. It was Tom Burrows from the city and myself, and then Mayor Garner, it's an representative that was there. And then Rose was there by Zoom and also Melissa Bynum was there by Zoom. It was, I'd say it was, it was pretty respectful that he didn't attack, you know, any of, any of the elected officials that were there or even address him. I don't think that Tom said anything, had any comments. I didn't have any comments. I was just there to listen and observe. The meeting lasted about an hour and a half and started at six and it was over with at 7:30. And I think they've got some plans to have another meeting in another couple of weeks or so. And they passed out petition forms to go and get signatures. Each body, each person that is there was supposed to go out and get fifty, fifty signatures. So we'll see whether.
So some of the emails that I've been getting on the, from the website, from our website that I sent directly to board are people that don't live in Kansas City, Kansas.
Yeah.
I've gotten some from Topeka and so are they the Sierra Club people? If they're outside of here and they're interested in, okay.
I, I would say that, listening to the comments that were made and what were the issues, that a lot of it is miscommunication. They don't, you know, they don't fully understand what's going on. They, somebody tells them, you know, the pilot is this or this is that. And they just take it and run with it and take it as gospel on it.
Yeah, I noticed some of the stuff that.
Like I said, there are a lot of mis, miscommunication and misunderstanding. Maybe Dave, now that if you get some extra people in his place, we might be able to, you know, to address some of that communication problem that they're, that we have.
So in your opening statement, you said something about they want safe.
They're, they're safe and affordable utility access for everyone.
What? I'm, I'm confused with the word safe.
Well, probably safe water because, I mean, they're asking for what we give them. Safe and affordable. I mean, we, we know that our rates are comparable to anybody's and better than most. And if it, if not for the fact that it is the UG bill also attached to our bill, I don't think that, I think that people.
Safe could have been, you know, that, that could be the Sierra part of it, that they talked about the pollution.
Okay.
That, then, you know, so many deaths are credited to the, to pollution and asthma and, you know, water's being polluted and that's where, that, that could be where it's safe, where the safe.
Safe, okay. All right.
Okay, that's.
Thank you for reporting that, Tom.
Your welcome.
Is there anybody else?
Madam President, can I, can I interject?
You may, Rose, please do.
Thank you. Just, just add on what Tom said. I, I will tell you that the way I interpreted safe, it has to do with utility disconnections. And, you know, potentially life threatening situations with people with medical devices that obviously rely upon electricity. I know, Tom, you touched upon, you know, sort of the medical application device issue. That, that's the way I was interpreting safe. And I think another word that they used was equitable. And I think, you know, from their perspective, they're looking at it in terms of income and, you know, percentage of utility relative to income. And whether or not, you know, folks that, if the utility portion of their bills is exceeding X percent of their income, you know, it, it, it's obviously problematic. And, and folks, if they can't afford their utilities and cannot afford to keep them connected and have to pay the entire bill and not make the choice between the UG charges and the utility charges, we all know what happens. And, and I will say that from, from our perspective, you know, I know that we have looked at, since I've been on the board, we've looked at the customer service policies. And, you know, perhaps we need to refresh that look. But, you know, one of the things that we as a board don't see, and I brought this up before, is that there are standard operating procedures that the utility also has in place that I certainly have never seen, perhaps other board members have. And I don't know if that's causing confusion too, because Tom, I agree with you. I think there's a communication problem. And, but I, you know, I don't know if it's as, as a direct communication problem as we think it is. Perhaps we don't know what, what customer service is relying on to make decisions on a daily basis with, you know, certain customers. So that, that's all I would have to add, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Does anybody else have anything to report? Is David on, do you know? Is, because I know he had a.
Yep, there he is. Not or here?
David Haley.
David Haley is not.
He's not on? Because I know he had a committee report Monday. What, what's his standing committee?
Economic Development.
Okay, but he's not on. So, ready to go to you?
Good, yep. So I'll wait until regular session to go over in my comments. So, item number five, invite Ryan to come back. Talk about self recognition policy. You know, we presented this a few weeks ago. Questions about where the union is without me taking away from what they're going to talk about. Dennis, Ryan, Lori, met with the union and their attorneys. And my understanding is with all these people, what the policy is they really didn't have any burning issues. They were, were in full support of it. But that was my interpretation. So Dennis, Ryan, whoever wants to take it from here?
Sure. Thanks, Bill. Yeah, so we did meet with the union. We first provided them a draft of the self-recognition policy. Then we met with them over at the union hall with Mr. Dixon, the business representative for Local 53, and with their attorney. You know, explained to them why it is that we wanted to do the self-recognition policy, the background for it, that, you know, we felt it was important to give some structure to labor negotiations. And I think generally they agreed. They gave us comments and some suggested changes. We rolled all of their suggested changes into the draft. And so that's what you have in front of you. You know, I can kind of walk through them, you know, on the red line. What, one of the things that I added, and this was in response to one of the, one of the points that the board brought up at our last work session is provide some clarity as to the definition of the board. And so where appropriate, I added the term elected board, so that was clear. Then we made the change from clerk, because that position actually just doesn't exist, to two executive assistant to the general manager, which is consistent with what we told you all last time. One of the comments on the third page is most of the management rights language came from the Lawrence Self-Recognition Resolution. And I think through discussions with the union, they wanted to see the management rights to be more aligned with state statute. So we made that change, changed it to the management rights from state statute, almost verbatim.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, why was it conducted, changed it to carry on, carried upon?
That's the terminology statute. Yeah. So we talked about, you know, kind of the timeframes that were spelled out in the self-recognition resolution. They actually thought it would be a good idea if we got started a little bit earlier and gave ourselves a little bit of time. So we made those changes. We moved up the commencement of negotiations by a couple of months, October 1st rather than December 1st.
So we begin?
We've had many, many sessions with them at this point. They wanted to have a provision in here that they wanted the fact finding to be an open public meeting. I think I said in here, you know, usually want them open so their membership can attend and listen. I'm perfectly fine with that. I, I actually think that helps. So the union can hear what both parties, with the membership can hear what both parties' positions are. But that's really, that's really kind of it. Their, their comments were fairly minimal. And so that's, we're presenting it to you and we would recommend approval of it at this point.
If we approve it, when, when will it go into effect immediately?
Yes.
For this?
Yes.
Set this negotiation period?
Correct.
An idea placing on the regular session agenda for the night. So if the board wants to go ahead and move forward with approval of it, can get that done tonight as well.
This is Jeff. I, I mean, it's nice to hear that it's, it's gone to the union and, you know, they're agreeing with it. So that helps me rest better about it.
Yeah, they were, one of the things they said they were concerned about, which I anticipated was when they first heard about it was that they were going to have to recertify the union. And so they were glad to see that I had already kind of anticipated that and said they weren't going to have to do that. So that was, that was really the only thing that they pointed out as a significant concern that we had really anticipated, kind of already cut off, so.
Anybody have any other questions?
Do you have anything to add?
No, I, you know, I think that they, the, the meeting was very amenable. Both sides wanted to get this done and it went very well. So we were happy with that. They were happy and they're ready to move forward.
Goodness.
Yeah.
So we ready to take this up in regular session? Rose, did you have any comments on this?
I did not, thank you.
Okay. Still don't have David. Okay.
All right, thank you. So I know it's taken a while, you know, a couple of years ago or somewhere there about, I started talking to the board about executive dashboards and trying to get our senior management team in a better position to be able to have reports and things at their fingertips that are better than the spreadsheets and the manual things that we have all worked with in the past. So we've got some called BI tools, business intelligence tools, software that IT's been using and working with to develop some of these reports. So I'm going to turn it over to Jerry to give you a quick PowerPoint. A quick PowerPoint discussion about what we're presenting here. And then we're going to do a handful of, show you a handful of reports through a live connection. We don't have time to go through everything, obviously, so we'll just give you some sample views of what we have.
Thank you, Bill. This presentation takes about twenty-five to thirty minutes. We're going to leave sufficient time, the last fifteen or twenty minutes, we'll go over the demos. So the real live use of the tools, this is all going to be real data. It's not mocked up, so current. And I think it'd be very helpful to go through it. So first I'd like to go over a couple of slides. Next slide. We're going to talk about BI and I'm going to tell you where we've been and how we got here. So next to, click down. Well, we started mid-year, about a year, fourteen, fifteen months ago. Next. Interesting enough, we started with two part-time staff. Marcus is here, he's going to be helping present it. He's one of the people that I tagged to start with this. I wanted a leader that can move forward and get some training. So we had no BI experience, no business intelligence training. And we had great ambition. We had support from Bill. So with that, we embarked across a path to be able to deliver all the executive dashboards. We had to define what they were. We had to understand what it was. We had to meet with all the business units. It was a whole team effort with all the business units working with our team in realization of all of these dashboards. Next. We now got experience. I can say we've got training. You'll be a judge of that when you see it. And we have more support from all the business units. We really want these dashboards working for them. This is not my dashboards, they're not our team's dashboards. It's the business units' dashboards and they call the executive key performance indicators about how better to run our business. Next. Now we're going to show you our BI progress. We're going to tell you where we've been, how we got here, but we're going to really focus on what we can see. Next. So I'm going to introduce the BI team. Then I'm going to talk about what the dashboards are versus business intelligence. We're going to talk about the progress, what's coming in 2023. And then we're going to have the demo. Okay, with that, let's start with the team. So you've met Lawrence, he's presented before on texting. So he's a part-time person on this project. And Marcus, he's a part-time person on the project. So our two leaders are part-time, because they have other jobs to do. So we picked and chose different people on the staff to be able to cross-functional train on this. We can really impart the wisdom out to all of the IT department. So the presenter is going to be helping me as Marcus, I'll introduce him. But let's talk about the expanded team of other part-time people and full-time people I had to make this a reality. Next.
They're full-time, but they're just working on this project.
Exactly, yeah. Marcus is an employee, he's full-time, but he's part-time on this initiative.
Okay.
Okay. So we've got a couple of recent adds to the department. These are contractors, Armani and Greg. Greg is sitting over here running the device. And the rest of the people are here full-time, but they're part-time on the project. Okay? So in order to staff up to get a hundred and sixty-eight dashboards done, we needed some help. Okay, so we've picked various people within the department to assist in this initiative. And of course, we leaned on the experience and the knowledge of all the business units, of what metrics and how we measure them. Next slide. So what's BI? It's a process, business intelligence. It's methods that we use, techniques and results and valuable information to make better decisions. We work first on the first six months and what are the processes? How we get the information? How valid is it? And didn't want to have anything that was manually done. We didn't want manual paper sheets or spreadsheets. We wanted it all automated. We wanted it reliable, and you'll emphasize this as well. We want it automated, we want it consistent, and we wanted to have it easy to communicate, easy to use and put the power in the business unit's hands, be able to configure it if they needed to change the way it's presented. Bar charts, pie charts, trend charts and that sort of thing. With that, we had to get all the data. And I have a slide to show you all the data that comes in. And then we wanted to get valuable information to run the business better and so that we can improve our business processes. That's BI. Well, let's talk more about the dashboards themselves, the next slide. So what's an executive dashboard? Executive dashboards is the hundred, hundred and sixty-eight large dashboards that have multiple reports. So we've got a hundred and sixty-eight of them by the end of this month. Each with five to seven reports. So this may be a dashboard that you will see. And I'll call this a report, that a report, this a report, pie chart. These are different reports that the business unit wanted. We put them into a, a whole dashboard so you can see it one single pane of glass. Okay, next slide. So we wanted a single pane of view. This graphic I put together this morning to help illustrate it. We have experts in the business units. These experts know how to use Maximo, they know how to use GIS. They know how to use Fusion Financials. And they all have their own analytic reports they have, but basically it's two dimensional. It's basically how much of volume we have over time. Or it's the cost over time, so X and Y. But they don't grab data from other, other applications. So this is an application, we have meters and smart grids, we've got meter data management, we've got GIS mapping. So we have all people in the field and all the business units that know these systems and our people help maintain them. There is data in every one of these little boxes. So what the tool does, next slide, next from here, is that the BI tool itself grabs data from all of these different applications. And now you've got three or four dimensions. Now you have the volume of work orders or the volume of outages. You have it over time, but you have it by customer, you can have it by meter. So we take all the different data points here and make music out of it. We get a, we get a dashboard that has cost per customer per day or leaks per customer or per pole mile or our per, per pole, leak per water mile or how to use on a, on a conductor cable. So we can see and get more relevant information by connecting all of it. Here to fore, we haven't had the tool to do it. Now this BI tool called Tableau connects all the databases, enables us to put all these dashboards together. Okay, next slide. So we've got a hundred and sixty-eight metrics across four departments. Here are the twelve departments. We will focus on key KPIs, key performance indicators. We started with a hundred and sixty-eight and then we've had to slowly mark it down as month by month goes bound, goes by, meeting the bill every month, meeting with the business units two or three times a month. And slowly we've got metrics completed. So we started really making progress because we've got now a lot of knowledge on how to do it. So we're almost finished here by the end of the next couple of weeks, a hundred and sixty-eight of them done. We're going to be demonstrating in the next few minutes, down this order here. We're going to demonstrate the ones that have the asterisks on it in this order. The water department, we started with first. The more flushed out, you'll see all of the different metrics for it. So with that, we're going to go, almost go into the presentation. I have one more slide here because I want to focus on, we focused on in 2022, the KPIs, the executive dashboards, the key performance indicators that we can run our business. The business units were doing this manually. They were grabbing it from this application, getting it from another application, putting it in a spreadsheet, putting it in a PowerPoint slide and then presenting it to their executive directors or presenting it to Bill monthly. So it was a labor-intensive project. We had no idea where the data came from, if it was manipulated or changed to meet how they want to define it. So we said, let's define it. And then from there, automate it. So we have consistent data all the time.
So these different business applications that, you know, are gathering this information, the BI, do each of those have their own individual dashboards?
A lot of them do. The older ones, probably not so good though. And they're only two dimensions.
Yeah, well, I understand. I'm just wondering if, if as we go down in layers, do we, are we already seeing some of it? But it's a little bit, it, it's harder to understand because you're seeing it on a moment by moment instead of a little bit grander scale.
Right.
So that's, I'm just wondering if any of them had dashboards.
They do. And they're various degrees of, various degrees of technology. But they weren't grabbing information from various databases.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we had implemented those or if they.
They come and come with it. They come out when we have a statement of work, we, we want to know what, before we award the contract, does this have what we need to run our business? Okay. So now in 2023, we're not finished yet. We did the key metrics across the enterprise. Now we're going to prove these dashboards with more drill-down capabilities. You want to know how many leaks there are. What zones had them? What streets had the leaks? Why are the leaks happening? Is it deterioration? Or then you collect it by customer? What customers experience it? So we grab all the numerators and the thermometers and we can change it by a, just a click on a box that says, I want to know leaks. I want to know leaks in customers. I want to know 2021, 22. So we'll demonstrate that in a tool that's very helpful to analyze that. It's user-friendly so that each of the people using it can use it without having IT to do the dashboards for them and have a several-day delay until we put the report together. Then we're going to build the department dashboards per the request and we're going to enable the departments themselves to build these dashboards. They can't disrupt the data because when they, we're putting into a big repository. They can't disrupt the data because when they, we're putting into a big repository and they can't manipulate the data at the source. So we're allowing the business units to be able to build their own dashboards to suit their needs because we're not the experts in their business. With that, that's what's coming in 2023. It's exciting. You'll see what we've done so far with the base level effort, the executive dashboards. We're really going to fly through this here. Now we've got the expertise and the support from all the business units because they like what they see and they want more of it. With that being said, I covered that in six minutes. I'm going to spend most of the time now handing it over to Marcus. And Greg is over here. I'm going to be driving it. Marcus is going to take the, the pointer here and going through with it, and he'll talk about every of the dashboards and the order that you saw there. So I want to emphasize, we'd rather not have you, you can ask any question you like, go over the content. I'm more interested in showing them what we can do and how we do it and how we display it. Michael, we don't have the answers on why leaks occurred in that one location.
When did we launch into, when did we start working on this project?
It started back in June of last year.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one? With no training. So we didn't know pretty much done.
I just couldn't remember. I know that, I know that I've heard updates. I remember the original proposition to us, and there the proposal, I guess, to us. And then I think we had one update since then, kind of about its coming.
I think customer service showed you that?
Yeah, it might have been. It might have been Mark was showing, walking through.
Yes, I was using this tool.
Okay, so let me take a little bit further. So Jeff, really, if you talk about dashboards, it really goes back about 10 years ago. But we were only focused on certain departments and building out reports in certain departments, okay? We always had this conversation about how do we pull all this stuff across the utility together and present it to the executives so we all know kind of what's going on across the utility. I don't have to pick up the phone and say, well, what's going on in the plants? What's going on in accounting? What's going on in IT? Now give me a set of reports that I can read every, every day myself. And let's get away from just focusing on this department by department things and keeping the information buried there. So Jerry came in. We had the Tableau tool that we bought. We hadn't really did anything with it. Tasked Jerry to, okay, take this thing and run with it. And him and the rest of our team was just happy to, to produce what they're, what we're producing, okay? But we are, we have made more progress in the last year and a half than in the 10 years prior to that.
Well, the right people, we can get it done.
Yep.
Want to start it off with a model that we like to use in our team. We like to keep it simple and clean. So every dashboard that you see will be simple, will provide a lot of data, a lot of data. So as Jerry mentioned, all of these reports, like on this one, there's four up top, two, two. So total eight reports. Eight reports on one dashboard. Look at the dashboard as your car, like when you came in this morning or this evening. Right? When you started your car up, I'm mapping, you see a speedometer, maybe check engine, hoping to check it, right? It's not on. But those are the type of things you'll see, you know, feel like. Well, look at this just like that. If you're getting low on fuel, you know, you get an indicator light in your car to let you know, hey, it's time to fill up. This tool has a capability of doing that. So let's go ahead and start off. This is the electric supply summary. Every dashboard has a story, a story that that department wants to tell or present to Bill executives so far. Looking at this one here, this one's going to explain about cost. It's going to explain about expense as well as energy load. So starting off to the left, we're going to start from the top. I'm going to go from the left corner. So most of the dashboard is going to have year information. We're, we always display usually year-to-date, 2022 is this one. As we go across, we're going to have all of these KPIs. They're going to be for 2022. Now, if we wanted to select 2021, of course, we can select 2021. We can select multiple.
So if, if you go back, I mean, I don't know how far you realistically even need to go back, but are those historically accurate?
Yes.
Numbers.
If we, we have the data, it is accurate. Greg's already displaying 2021. You can see that it kind of popped up with multiple, but we'll, we'll work our way down. So starting from the top, as you can see, we have the averages for the KWH, the expense. We have the power supply expense. We have the revenue. And we have the average system factor. So you see these numbers. You see three cent right here. I know you're wondering, how did we get the average of that? So if you hover over this, this actually gives you the month of what goes into that average. So we can see every month. Oh, there we go. Back to 2021, 2022, sorry about that. You can actually see the 12 months or in this one, this case, two months that actually goes into that. Each month, we can actually see a trend. We know summertime, we're usually going to bring up the energy load due to the, due to the heat. So August is always going to be that bigger one. Same thing when we go through all the others. We can roll this. This is the actual tooltip, by the way. We're not part of the drill downs, but we're just kind of moving to see the data. You have the main on view, and then when you move over as a tooltip, tooltip is this insight about the information that we're actually looking at. So this chart here offers bar charts. It's right here. We have the line graph now. That's really, if you look at, that's two reports in the one, actually just playing right here on the screen, single view. So we're displaying here system load factor versus the electric grid. As you can see, we always give you a legend to kind of differentiate those. We have the energy loss percentage, and I know right now you're looking at that. What does that mean? We'll get back to that here in a little second. Then you can look down here. We have the average load. At a quick glance, we can make a quick decision to say 27% of our residential customers is using a lot of the energy that we're producing. As well as we have the install capacity nameplate. We can look at it at a quick glance. This is in megawatts. We can say the big dogs in this one is wind and coal. So going back to the 20, going back to the year up there, we're going to select two different ones. So this is actually going to give us a side view. Now we can look back last year, 2021, 2022. And what that is, we can actually look and start, start making business decisions off the last two, three, four years in a single view. It's actually the starting of the trend in analysis. A neat feature about this is if we wanted to see, if you don't mind, you want to click July for me? We can actually zone out everything. As you can see, it's still in the background, but we can still see this number 464. So this is the neat feature about it. If we wanted to do, that's 2021, we wanted to hold control. And we want to do control for the, this July of 2022. We can actually look those together. Everything is still there. You still can see the data. However, you can focus on those key, key months right there. So a lot going on in this one. Like I said, we got bar charts, we got doughnut charts, but it's a lot of valuable information to those specific business units that request this.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, ma'am.
On the, on the KPIs across the top, did, did you limit each group with how many? Or did they just determine what was most important for their department?
So, so every department that we go in, we ask them, what, what, what is the importance? What do you want to see first? You know, what is your main? How can you make your business decision? So this is what the business, each business is going to be different. You're going to see some that's at four, you're going to see some that has one. It just depends on how that business wanted to view or how it was built. You'll see as we go through this, it's going to be a lot of designs, a lot of different things, a lot of ways we can display data. All right. So Jerry mentioned kind of 2023, some drill-down features. This dashboard here, we're going to kind of display what a drill-down actually is. So we're going to start from the top, just like we do any other ones. This is the work orders for electric operations. Their main purpose, what they wanted to display on this is work orders. A work order comes from our Maximo system, so we're going to be talking about Maximo through a lot of this. It's our asset management tool. A work order is what actually workers out in the field use to do their job. So every morning they're having to test with certain workers or maintenance or whatever the case may be. They will have to use the work orders to get there. So starting at the top, we have the total work orders. We have the, oops, click it. Oh, it's okay. We have the total work orders. We have the completed work orders and how we have some filters. We have by year, month, work order status. As you can see, there's a lot of statuses. We're going to go on down to the next one. And then we have what we call a heat map. This is another visual that this particular group wanted to see, a heat map.
So before you, could you hover again on month? Download, yeah. So, so they could go through and they could pick quarterly if they wanted. They could select the quarters that they so they could see, not just like the July over July, but they could also look at first quarter or first quarter.
Correct.
Thank you.
So going down to the heat map, I think this is a pretty good feature here. We see a whole lot of data. What, what does this really mean? We have the, the dark blue, which is the heat part. This is obviously, we have a lot in this area here. So if we wanted to know a little bit why, so we're going to pick up a little bit easier one just to display for purposes. So let's go to non-capable. If we click on the number two, as you can see, the data down here changes. There we go. So we see it's from January and April, and we have two in here by priority, priority three to. If we wanted to go to and actually see what, where, where is that status at? We're going to click over here where it says view details. We're going to get it. This is the drill-down feature. It's going to take us to a whole nother screen. So now we can actually see more of that granular detail. A lot of people would use this as an Excel or something like that. This is more for the clerk or the actual field worker. We can see that this is the two work orders that we clicked on. And we can see where they're at. We can see that it's in progress, and we can see when did it change, you know, January, June. We know where they're at. We do have a work order number. So we can actually take this information here from this report. We can go back into the Maximo system and actually get a lot more detail if need be.
This is, this is what I've been waiting to hear about from Maximo especially is that, you know, that was part of the whole cell was getting to the point that we have BI in place and we can actually see what we're doing without having to pick up the phone or get up and drive to another building.
Absolutely. So yep, that's all that I click right now.
Yeah, that is.
This is this first phase. It's going to get a lot more depth. So we got the right team.
Marcus time. I, they want to complete five minutes early, so we have about 13 minutes left to go through another five.
So I'm going to speed up.
We're going through several systems to get here. This through the Zoom, and then back over, it's going to have a little lag in there. So this is not like that normally.
Yeah, it's pretty quick. So this one here, we're going to talk about, it's going to become the same thing. It's what the, the actual electric production guys, they wanted to see the revenue versus the total expense. So in this one, we're using two different sources. We're using the EMS system. And we're using actual Fusion. Fusion is our financial system.
And EMS is the energy management system.
Okay, thank you. And the same thing. So just speed it up a little bit. There's a tooltip. We can actually see the months that is actually going for 2022. All of these will have that type of feature. So just going to give you the trend of 2022 over here. All right, coming down to the budget information or finance, the fusion information. We have, they wanted to display what we're actually using versus actual, what we're actually spending. Future or drill down on this one, us, we might want to actually see what did we spend on. We actually might want to down it down. And actually see what we spent. Went into the fuel costs by generations, by generator, sorry. We have 2020, 2021, 2022. We can see the expense, you know, a little bit higher than 2021 versus 2020 and 2022, 2022. Future enhancements could be if, could we drill down into the vendor? We might want to see what vendor is selling that, if that will cost, just for a business decision, you need to go to another business, you know, another vendor to buy that.
Not to go too far off, but so, so this is just giving pulling static data or existing data, but will it have the feature to also project, you know?
Yes.
Okay.
So what we're building right now, just to kind of answer that, is past data.
Yeah, you have to know where you've been before you know where you can go.
Water distribution. So this is my favorite one. I'm going to try to speed this one up. This one has a lot of information.
Speaker spent time on this one.
Okay, okay. This is the fun one. I think everybody will like this one. So kind of the same thing standing up here, as we mentioned earlier, we talked about the KPIs up top. You see this one has a little bit more. Yep. So Jerry mentioned about the water breaks for 100 miles. We can hover over that and see by the year, tooltip. Again, this normally doesn't keep refreshing. So same information there. Come all the way across. You see we're doing work order. We're telling the story of work orders or applied into the actual costs and everything. So we come over to treatment costs. We're going to give a breakdown in a pie graph of actually where that cost is. So it's data inside of data. Same thing with, you know, completed past and work orders. They might want to know, you know, what's the delay in work orders? If, if we are pasting, why? Down here, we have unplanned and planned disruptions. For these two, I think this is very nice to see. Helps us kind of get into the maintenance of, correct maintenance, ventilator. So my favorite thing to highlight down here, and I failed to mention, is we're using three systems on this one. So we have Maximo system. We have the Esri system, which is mapping, which is the map that you see down here. As well as the GIS system. So three sources into one, making one dashboard. Everything's right at the fingertip. Another one, we're going to get a lot. We're going to go a little bit farther in this one here in a second. Another thing that I think that stands out pretty good is this one right here, average time to respond. And I'll just mention a priority five for water distribution is responding one day. They have a break. As you can see, with the tooltip hover over, we have a 236 work orders. And the average time of response at that's two hours. I think that's pretty impressive. So now let's go to the map up there.
Yep, sure. Up at the very top, there are more menus and more reports that are seen on that little, small little row there.
Yes.
And so the dashboards are more than just what you see. There are other dashboards as well that tie into that.
So Jerry mentioned, let's just pick a pressure zone. I'm sorry, zone. Yeah, pressure zone, dang, any one of them. As you can see, there are 496 workloads on for a lot. This is the gallons reported that's lost. So we might want to know what is the cause of that leak? Let's select the cause of leaks. We'll scroll down up here. This, maybe a couple of them. deterioration and
I like that. So you can see the leaks that are all on one street.
Well, yeah, and sees or in an area, you can see where the hotspots are.
Then you can see which ones are with wrought iron pipe, which ones are ductile, which ones are, are.
Yeah, there, there was a few years back that there was the idea of coming through and heat mapping basically for the water leaks. And it was going to be rather expensive and stuff, but, but it was well worthwhile, but you can kind of secondary back into that same kind of idea.
Absolutely, absolutely. Here on the right of the main diameter, we can tell which pipe saw is actually the issue. We can narrow that down to six inches of range selected. So we can see there are six out there. So this gives us a little bit more analysis on, is it the six is just common, it's commonly just breaking? We're going to go just right here, sort of height. This is going to kind of give you a little bit insight of what we can do with this information. So here we have the type of hydrants. We have hydrants expected, sorry. We have the hydrant suspected. We have a hydrant maintenance factor, and we have it by decade. So right now what we're displaying is 2010 to 2020. It's just like right there. This is going to give us a little bit more insight of maintenance, you know? Is it the 1980 ones that's given us the most issues? Do we need to replace those first? So right here, it's going to be another drill-down feature. We're going to cloud corporation. As you can see, the data changes. So now it's saying we have 154. That's cloud. And expected, we have expected 56 so far throughout the year. And this information down here gives you what zone it's in, as well as what decades it's in. A pre-informational dashboard, I said, it is one of my favorites. It shows a lot of potential what we can do, but that Esri map is Shows a lot of potential what we can do with that Esri map. The sky's the limit with that. So. Simply clean. That is the model. So kind of the same thing, KPIs up here, um, but I actually take a little bit difference. You guys have kind of seen kind of our, our flow of how we're doing everything. So another fun fact would be this information up here. So the good thing here is we'll start with alerts. This is very, very good. So I'm not going to click it because we can set up alerts. So let's just say we're looking at water demand down here. And you see we have a peak of 50 right now. So what if we wanted to know that we hit 50? Is that an issue? Well, if we hit 50 again, we can actually get an email sent out to the users, whoever that user may be. And they can actually take note if something they need to do. So pretty good information on that alert. The next one is we have share. Again, if they hit 50, 50% and we wanted to share it out with the business units, we'll share that out. It's just simple email, share, share it to whoever you want. Download is if we wanted to have a board meeting, we wanted this whole thing here, right? The whole video. But I actually pulled it up Tableau. We can actually import it into a PDF, a PowerPoint. Or if we wanted to actually take that data, put it in Excel and then you can manipulate it any way that you want to. So pretty cool feature there. And we have comments. So if I'm a supervisor and I wanted Greg to look at something, I can tag Greg. Hey Greg, can you keep an eye on this? He'll have that alert. So if he needs to look at something or make a change, he can actually use that magnitude up there. So very powerful tool. All right. Kind of the same flow with this one. Got a KPI. This one is telling the story of work orders. This is Maximo and our WIM system. Uh, WIM is our water system for, for skating, skating side up. So.
Does this, is this as real time as the latest input into any of our apps?
Yeah. So I'll tell you, I'll tell you the thing. So we can schedule this thing every hour. We can have it live data. We can schedule it once a month. Uh, we let that business unit, yep. We'll let that business unit decides. If it's live, of course, it's going to take a little bit longer when you're trying to query. If it's an extract, we can get it pretty quick. But if they're not going to use it like that, we do not want to put the toll on the system on that resource. So. Uh, another fun, fun factor is I will show you this, uh, graph. Greg, if you mind selecting, uh, 2022, 2021 and 2019, something like that. Uh, we kind of displayed line graphs and we're going to display on the next one. But as you can see, this is a different view to see year over year. It actually puts it all in one thing. We can actually have a, a clear vision of what we want to see. So for instance, if you wanted just to click 2022 up here. There you go. Again, it fades into the background, we still can see what we want to see. So it's a powerful tool. The sky's the limit with this tool. We can actually do the control thing if we wanted to select 2019 and 2022, we can hold those down. And you'll see the other one's still in the background. So it's highlighting what we actually need to see.
Could we have cash operations?
Cash operations. Simply clean. So we go ahead and select all of the years. All right. So what we have here is, there's your KPI. We all spend the years, as you can see them up here in the title, 2020, 2021, et cetera. There is your line graph that's showing year over year. We have back here, uh, this is our operators. So we can actually, what we can do with this is create a ratio. It's showing what each operator is doing in the background as far as processing. So if you wanted to create something as a ratio, we can say, how many mistakes are you truly making? Just using example, if I made 15 mistakes or errors through the system. Okay. Is that a bad thing or is that a good thing? We don't know. But if I could say if I processed this number here, essentially a million transaction, is that actually pretty good? So, uh, coming down here, as you can see, this is a different view. We're stacking, um, the totals of these payments over the last three years down here. So you can actually see. And if you click on one of them, click the green, yeah, it's actually going to change everything up here. So you can see the payments, the input for this is for the whole year. There's your month as well as there's your total, total year right there. So pretty powerful tool. Pretty good?
Yeah.
Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Like in the dashboards.
Yeah.
Very informative data.
There's obviously many, many more. We could have spent a half a day going through.
So I know, I mean, it's just what gets measured, gets done.
Right.
Just period. You have to know, you have to know the data to make the best decisions. The more data you have, the better you're able to see where you've been and where the trends are, the better decisions we'll make. That'll keep our costs, you know, in control.
So we were laser focused on Bill's 168, the executive dashboards across the enterprise. And we've delivered all of those 168, but there's 168 times five to seven reports in each one. It's covered seven, seven of the 168. And next year, we're focusing on more of the drill downs and then tailor specifics of each business unit one, one themselves. We plan on putting these on the BP central internal website, but they can easily access it from their, from any, any device. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you.
You get a motion to a joint work session?
This is Jeff. Move to Joe.
Second.
I think Bob actually made the motion.
Okay.
I'll take the second.
All right. I'll call, we'll call Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Brenneman.
Hi.
Haley. Haley.
Senator Haley, please hit star nine to unmute.
Go through Mylan. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
I'll come back one last time. Haley.
Thanks. Meeting is adjourned.
This is the last one. Okay. Two, seven.